Good morning, the Wednesday of 1st, 2019 Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. I ask Mr. Wayne A. Cox to give indication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Dear heaven and father, thank you for today. Thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you lead and guide us in making the decisions for the citizens of Wayne County, that we make the right decisions. And if we do make decisions that might be questionable, just give us the strength to discuss them and clarify and make sure that we are making the right decisions for the betterment of Wayne County, the place that we live. Also be with our state leaders and our federal leaders to make the right decisions for this great country and this great state. We also ask that you be with our men and women in uniform, all branches of the service. We ask special prayer for the ones that are deployed, they're in harm's way, risking their life to defend the freedom that we have in this great nation. We also ask that you be with our first responders as they protect us here at home. We also ask that you be with our friends and loved ones that are dealing with sickness. We ask that you touch them, heal their bodies. We also ask that you be with the ones that has lost loved ones. Seems like the older we get, the more funerals we attend. We just ask that you be with those families. And again, we ask in your guidance in the decisions that we make here today. In your holy name, amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now can I get approval in minutes of the September 17, 2019 Commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, any discussions? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Discussion and adjustment of agenda.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed in the agenda briefing, we would like to add two things. Number one, under consent agenda is the involuntary commitment transportation agreement. As we talked about, new statutes require us to have an agreement in place, and this has been reviewed and approved by our sheriff's department. We would like to put that as number six, or excuse me, number seven, under consent agenda. And also, under special presentations, number six, resolution for breast cancer awareness month, and that will be read by Commissioner A. Cox.
Do you have anything to add? If not, can I get a motion for adoption of the agenda?
To move.
First, you made any discussion? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I was attending to something. Who made the motion for the approval of the minutes?
I did.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, special presentations.
Thank you, Chair. Number one, under special presentations, is motion to adopt resolution 2019-28, resolution authorizing the Wayne County Development Alliance to file a formal application for the NC Rules Center Building Reuse Grant Program for $500,000 for business expansion related to Project Nest. And we did discuss that during the agenda briefing. Mark Pope with WCDAs here now, if you have any additional questions that you need answered.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2019-28, authorizing Wayne County Development Alliance to file a formal application for the North Carolina Rules Center Building Reuse Grant Program for $500,000 for a business expansion related to Project Nest.
First, you made any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you.
And next, I would like to have Mark come up and kind of introduce the video that we have, that we do want to show you, that has been produced by WCDAs and also our Public Affairs Department, and something to be very proud of.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Tim and the folks here at the county really worked hard. You know, our shell building is very, it's been very popular even before it got off the ground. So we've been submitting it for a lot of proposals, and this is one thing that I wanted to do, is make sure we did some drone video to show the park, show what's around the park with our rail, our substations, our water, just so we had all those necessary infrastructures in place and the road access. So as we move forward, we do more of these things. As we go from part to part, our business campus on Paitown, we'll be doing the same thing. We're really moving forward with that, and then we're even moving out Olive and do the park over there. So we also want to do buildings. You know, this is the new wave of how you advertise, is people, you know, you don't get them in your county a long time. You know, you're lucky if you get them an hour, two hours. So whatever you can provide them upfront, a video or drone video flying inside the building and around the building, show all the assets to it, it helps you. So this is kind of a wave of new future. My hat's off to all the folks involved. I think it's good. We'll do some more tweaking, but I think you enjoy it, so take a look.
Welcome to Park East, Lot 8, in Goldsboro, North Carolina. This 50,000 square foot shell building sits on 18.94 acres and can be expanded to 100,000 square feet. This property is located inside the established Park East Industrial Park. The building is being constructed with a 35-foot ceiling height as well as 125-foot column width. The location of Lot 8 features adjacent rail, county water, and an electrical substation adjacent to the property. This location has easy access to Highway 70, Highway 117, I-795, and future I-42, as well as two regional airports, Raleigh-Durham International Airport within 70 miles, and two shipping ports within 100 miles. Park East is accessible through a main intersection with Highway 70. This building is ready to be customized by you. With an estimated completion scheduled for fourth quarter of 2019, now is the time to take a look at Park East, Lot 8.
I hope you like it. You know, we've talked consultants and learning you got to keep these things within or under three minutes. So you'll see that hits that pretty much on target. So we actually got the decking going on board now, so and some of the facades going on. So it's changed, it's even changed since we did the video. So that's good stuff. We did make a short list on the project, so hopefully we'll come back and talk to you more about that later on. Any questions?
Just one, I know this is all over social media, and we're getting a lot of hits on it from social media, blogs and all that kind of stuff.
Tim's monitoring that. We've got, this is on our webpage, it's on LoopNet, it's on the Southeastern Partnerships website, and I think you'll see it on the state website, too. So they're changing theirs with the state, but it's doing what it needs to do right now, so we're excited about it.
Mr. Chairman, if I might. I go by there constantly, checking out that. When they started, it looked like yesterday, actually installing some of the stone facade on the outside. And if y'all haven't been by there, go by there, because y'all are going to be amazed at the end result of this building. You know, a lot of people were concerned that we were going with a metal structure. But when you see this, you're going to think, well, this was all site built. I mean, it's phenomenal.
First class, it really is.
It really is, it's first class.
Yeah, that stone work looks pretty awesome.
It does.
Thank you.
Just give me a brief update on what's going on with the industrial park in Mount Olive.
Industrial park, well, you know, we still have some land down there, so Mount Olive looks at a lot of it. So we still, we still try to market that. You know, the airport's across the road from it. We've got about, I think it's 40 to 70 acres that's on the airport property, and we've got right much property available. You know, there's some things we got to work through with the water sewer situation in Mount Olive, we're trying to work through that, so. But we still want people to know that we have property available. So wherever it may need to fit, you know, as we talked about the corridor of I-795 that'd hook us into 40 eventually through Mount Olive, you know, that's going to be very favorable for us to market that site, so that'll help a lot.
Now, you did mention the water sewer situation, and that's, that's the one that's going to cost about $5 million to.
Yeah, we're hoping to get some help with that. You know, we'll see how the budget turns out, but a lot of folks working, from the folks with DEQ, the town of Mount Olive, so all of it, there's a lot of folks working to try to make sure we have capacity. That's the key, is how we keep growing, is have capacity to bring clients in.
And the reason that I would want you, and thank you for highlighting the water sewer situation and the budget. It sounds like it doesn't matter which side of the budget that succeeds, the same $5 million has been promised in either side of it. And that's worthy to say to the public that no matter which side wins out on this contest in Raleigh, the Mount Olive area is looking forward to that $5 million. And I was at a meeting recently, and I won't name names, but there are other entities in that area looking to that budget. And promises been made on both sides of it, so it's worthy for the public to understand that no matter which side wins out in Raleigh, promises have been made and promises need to be kept.
We just say a prayer and it happens quickly. It sort of helps us all.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the video. Would you sell? When a prospective client looks at that online or wherever, is there a way that they can associate our Wayne County jet port to what we're looking at? Because one of the things we know is that the jet port is a huge ingredient in economic development with all the changes that's going on, positive changes. I would like to suggest that as part of that video, when you mentioned two airports, you mentioned Raleigh-Durham, might ought to throw in the jet port.
And we do on our website, when we hit the video, you really got to hit the highlights, especially how you're recruiting outside of Wayne County. So our website will be all inclusive, so you see all the airports. We make sure we mention all those around us. And you're right, you know, it is an asset for us, and we'll, we just can't put it in with that video, because it's just a little different. But anyway, we make sure we get them included.
There you go, you get it all inclusive.
And not to add in more compensation. I took notice that you referenced Raleigh-Durham also, but I, and then I internalized that you were looking at the big picture, where the world would be looking at an airport that's recognized worldwide, because as great as our jet port is, and as great as Mount Olive airport is, if you mention one of them, you got to start talking about both of them. And I assume that you all just mentioned Raleigh-Durham and let it linger there, which is a good balance way to do this.
The key is, when going to do this for about 14 years, is you got to kind of zone in on what these people are going to ask you. They're going to talk about labor force and how they get in and out with international airports. So those are the things, is what is the infrastructure you have around the park, your road, your water, your sewer, gas, all of it. They really want you to focus in on that. And it'd be nice if you could focus in on the labor force and what Wayne Community College is doing for us, but you really got to zoom in when you get that two to three minutes, so you make sure you hit those important points that they are going to ask you. So that's why we do that.
I understand, yeah.
Good job, sir. Good job.
Thank you, thank you. Any other question? Thank you.
Next is number three, presentation on Medicaid D Open Enrollment Ship by ship coordinator Selena Beaman.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me share about the open enrollment with Medicare. The Medicare open enrollment, as always, begins October 15th and goes through December 7th this year. It's a time for people to look at their drug plans, anything that they have with Medicare. If they qualify for extra help, we have counselors that help do that as well. And we will be holding an open enrollment clinic at the Peggy Seager Senior Center starting October the 15th, going through December the 5th, and that will be on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and it's just a walk-in clinic. So people will bring in their Medicare card, bring in their medications, and we look at what they currently have and what new plan might be available for them, and if it's going to save them money. I will say with the Medicare counselors, we have six counselors that help out during open enrollment and throughout the year, and they come with a lot of knowledge. And last year, in the county alone, we saved over a million dollars for individuals in our county. So it is well worth the effort that they put in. And we could not operate this program without the volunteers that we have. So, but we will, like I said, be doing the open enrollment, and any questions? We will do appointments. I do do appointments on Thursdays and Fridays, but I'm the only one in the office on Thursday and Friday that does Medicare, but we have counselors there Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday during the open enrollment. Any questions?
And I just want to take a minute.
Yes, sir.
I probably think there's probably some folk out there just as in the blind about certain things I am.
Yes, sir.
So sometimes just from my edge for people who are, they heard about saying, I retired from the school system, which is under state plan.
Yes, sir.
So I've got my United Healthcare card, that if I understand correctly, they administer my healthcare, my state healthcare plan.
Yes, sir.
And I've got my pretty card says Medicare. So now, when I show up to the hospital or wherever, is there such a thing as one of these having precedent over the other one?
No. What it is, is you have to have Medicare, which is your red, white, and blue Medicare card, to be eligible to enroll in your United Healthcare plan with the state. Or if you had chosen the Blue Cross and Blue Shield plan, you still have to have Medicare. But with the United Healthcare plan, it is a private insurance company that has contracted with the state and with Medicare to offer your insurance, so that is your complete insurance.
Instead of, back in the old days, it was just Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
Right.
Then it was open up to all these other companies to get in on the gravy, if you will. Humana and United Healthcare and all those things. So they all competed to be able to administer a, the state health plan for me and for all the other people that's out there in the world.
So the only two choices you have as a state retiree is the United Healthcare and the Blue Cross and Blue Shield 70/30 plan. That's for state retirees. But for anybody else that's not a state retiree, in Wayne County this year, there were only three companies that offered a Medicare Advantage plan, which was United Healthcare, Humana, and Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And they have multiple plans, but that was what was available in Wayne County this year. But then people can keep their traditional Medicare and enroll in a Medicare drug plan, which is, you hear Part D, and that's, you know, that's what we do during the open enrollment, to look to see what's going to be most cost effective for individuals.
Now, and I'm not asking you to make any individual preference assessment, but if I was looking at United Healthcare and looking at Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Blue Cross, would it be, would it be fair for people who want to make an analogy, that we're talking about, if you're talking about United Healthcare versus Blue Cross and Blue Shield, you're talking about a 150 Ford truck versus a Silverado, they're both new trucks, good trucks.
Right.
So, and whenever you look and see that the open enrollment period is coming up, for people like me who ain't likely to change from what I've been doing, don't worry about it.
I wouldn't say don't worry about it. It's always better to look at your plan. I mean, it's during your open enrollment, that's what you have the opportunity to do. But now, you know, with some of the plans, you have higher deductibles and higher copays than you do with other plans. And with the state plans, we have a chart that gives you that comparison, and we can give you some guidance on that. Yes, sir.
When you say you do, you mean at your office?
I do. Well, I was actually on a webinar, the first of this week, that, or last week, I'm sorry, that went over the state plans and what was available and how, what the costs were going to be and stuff like that. So we have those PowerPoint presentation that we can print out those slides to be able to give you some guidance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I had one question.
Yes, sir.
Just a matter of information. It's, I've heard some people that turn 65 had a choice. They don't have to go on Medicare, is that correct?
You do have to enroll in Medicare Part A and Part B unless you are working. If you are working and your employer is going to allow you to keep your insurance, then the only thing you actually have to enroll in is Part A, because your health insurance with your employer is still your primary insurance. But now, when you retire, you need to enroll in Part B and a drug plan unless your employer is going to allow you to keep that insurance during, after your retirement, and that would act as a supplement plan to your Medicare.
Okay. Seven years ago, I wasn't offered that option. I own my own company. So I was going to stay on Blue Cross and Blue Shield and let my company pay for my healthcare, but I wasn't offered that option.
Well, now, if you retire, you do have to enroll in Medicare A and B.
Right, but I'm still working, I'm still working now, but the problem is, is that I, because of what I make, I still draw a salary, I'm penalized to the hilt, okay, with Medicare. I penalize big time if you're working. So it would actually be cheaper for me to come off of Medicare and go back on my company insurance, because the company was paying for it. You see my point?
I do, but I.
If you're still working, you are penalized big time.
Are you saying because your cost is increased?
No, because of my income. My income directly affects the cost of my Medicare.
Of your Medicare, yes, sir, it does.
Okay.
Yes, sir, it does. And that's for anybody. They get, Social Security looks at your income tax return, and that's how they generate the cost of your Medicare. So if you're over a certain threshold, then the cost of your Medicare is elevated. But for most general people, the cost for Medicare Part B is $135.50.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Like I, I'm a retired state employee, and I'm still on state retirement plan now.
Yes, sir.
There's no 80/20 available in Medicare?
Not with the state. You only have the option of the 70/30 or the United Healthcare plan. They do have two United Healthcare plans. They have the standard plan and one that's more advanced. The advanced plan, you pay a little bit for that. The difference that I have seen in the cost is like maybe $5 cheaper on your copay when you go to the doctor, those kind of things. So it's not a big amount of savings for the more advanced plan.
Sort of like, right, I'm now on the 80/20, I have to pay extra to get the Silverado, as you say. Okay, I just asked a question.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I go by your office and ask my questions, okay?
Yes, sir, that'd be fine. Okay. All right.
As she said, we will make appointments for you.
Well, let me, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Just briefly, you did say the information you talked about with the comparison, did you say was on your website? That's not what you meant, was it?
She was on. I have, I was on a webinar, and so we have the PowerPoint presentation, and I also have the chart that I can print out, the comparison chart for you, if you want some information. I'd be glad to share that with you.
All right.
You can email me, give me a call, I can email it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. All right.
Good morning. As you can see, I mean, just with your questions, how complicated the SHIP, I mean, this senior insurance information program, that's why they're there, and how complicated Medicare can be just to the average senior. And if it wasn't for these volunteers that took on learning this and going through the training and the knowledge they had, I mean, can you imagine the seniors trying to navigate this? And so that's why we're there, we're there to help you. And even for yourself, you have questions, and just know, you make an appointment, Selena is very knowledgeable, as well as our volunteers, we're going to recognize, like she said, we have six, all of them are experienced and very knowledgeable. And we, we're very blessed in Wayne County. Not every county has knowledgeable SHIP counselors like we do, and that where seniors can access them on a one-on-one basis. And I'll tell you, it is complicated for me. I'm still, I've still got to go through some training on that, so I leave it to the expert. And I'm very thankful for the job that Selena does as the SHIP coordinator, and she has 10 years of experience. We'd like to recognize two of our volunteers, and I'm going to have Selena present first with the certificates we have, that they've given years of experience, so I'm handing that off to Selena.
Okay, so first, we have Ms. Gail Jones, and Gail has been counseling with us for five years. She's been, she went through the training, and Gail volunteers her time, but she also comes in every other week, sometimes every week on Thursdays, if we have a lot of appointments that need to be scheduled. And so she helps throughout the year, but we want to appreciate her for the five years of service that she has given to us. Okay. And next, we have Mr. Larry Boyce, and he has been a volunteer with SHIP for 10 years. And so he is very knowledgeable, and not only does he help us in the office, him and Gail both help out in the office during open enrollment, but he is very active in the community, and he's always talking about SHIP, too. So, Mr. Larry, thank you for 10 years.
And we also have for him in appreciation for 10 years of outstanding volunteer service in a SHIP counselor, as a SHIP counselor of Wayne County Services on age in June 2019. And, you know, I will tell you, they don't just help inside the office. Once people know they have the knowledge, they're helping seniors outside, family, friends, neighbors, you know, just anybody in the community. And Mr. Larry, come by our office, I'm helping somebody, I need access to the computer. So they, they don't just stop inside those walls. So thank you again, Mr. Larry, for a great job in 10 years as well. Thank you.
Paula, if we could, Gail and Larry both can up here this week. Our staff can get a picture of them.
Appreciate that, thank you.
You guys standing?
Oh, no. I thought I was out of there.
And Selena just did 10 years, which I found out a little bit later, but as well. Okay, I'll look up and smile. Are you doing okay? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, I'm sure.
Thank you, Karen.
Next on our agenda is the introduction of our new EMS director, Dave Cutterback. And Dave, if you would come up and let me introduce you. We're excited to have Dave with us, and we're excited that Dave has really come back home. Dave is a former county EMS employee, left us to go to Wilson County as the assistant director for numerous years, still lived in the county, his heart is in the county. Could not. in the county, his heart is in the county. Uh, could not say more wonderful things about the quality of person that Dave is. And we're very lucky and very blessed to have him. In interviewing department heads since I've been here, this was probably one of the most strongest fields that we've had with respect to, uh, positions. And Dave really was head and shoulders above the applicants. Uh, and, and I appreciate, uh, Dave letting us come back home. Dave has hit the ground running. Uh, you'll hear this from the non-emergency transport discussion as well. He was at our EMS ribbon cutting last week or a couple weeks ago for, uh, for the Wilson EMS Station 11. We're just excited to have Dave here. And, and I kept texting Dave over the weekend and saying, you are coming back Monday, you are coming back Monday. I just want to make sure you're coming back Monday. And, uh, uh, he was saying with bells on. So, we're excited to have Dave. Uh, but I wanted y'all to meet Dave. And Dave, any words you want to say?
Sir, uh, my name is Dave Cutterback. Uh, for the past 12 years, I've been dropping my children off at Wayne County Schools. And I've been closing my days out by teaching at the Community College Paramedic Program. In between there, I've built EMS services all over eastern North Carolina, had the opportunity to work in South America, Central America. Uh, I cannot begin to tell you how excited I am to come back to Wayne County and start working with you all and continuing the vision that was created and continues to be created each and every day. Uh, it's a top-notch team that we have working here. Just like every industry, we, we have our hiccups in the road. Uh, there's no place in the world I'd rather be than Wayne County. So, thank you all for the opportunity.
Any questions for Dave?
Welcome.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Well, before you-
I'm sorry, Mr. Man. Yes, sir.
Before you step away from the podium, and I know anytime a new person comes in, they look at the landscape and see, you know, what's what. Just on a brief brush, is there anything that we need to, that you see from a technology standpoint, a life-saving standpoint, a more efficient standpoint, and another 10 things that I probably can't think of right now? Do you see anything right now we need to do that we are not doing?
Yeah, that's a great question. I appreciate you asking that. What I see is a team that's built a great infrastructure here. Uh, top-notch buildings, our ambulances are where they should be, our equipment is where it should be, and we have top-notch team members, the people that are staffing those trucks. We, we have a tendency to put the emphasis on the negatives, and, and that's not how I work. We have great people that are staying here, that are dedicated to this community, they're dedicated to the organization. That's where my focus is going to be. To answer your question, it's in, it's my job now to make sure that we're fulfilling the vision. I, I believe that you all have done what needs to be done, and it's time that I, I take it from here.
One, one thing that I, I want you to, the answer that I always look for, we talk about an average of eight-minute response time.
Yes, sir.
I have always questioned that because the response time, if I understand correctly, is averaged in for trips that would be made inside of Goldsboro to wherever. But when you're talking about Mount Olive and the Northern End, we're talking about an average.
Yeah.
We're not talking about eight minutes as everywhere, not the way that I use my two-litre calculator. It is an average.
Yeah.
So, it is for folk who are living in the Four reaches. When I think of that, I'm thinking about, say, the Grantham area, the, the, and I call it the Newton Grove Road. That is a long ways out there. I've driven school buses out that way. So, it's a long way before you get to the county line.
Yes, sir.
I would just want you to keep, not that I don't speak, keep all those kinds of things in mind when you're addressing the public and considering the people that you're going to be serving. Last thing, over time, other health providers in Wayne County will sometimes come to this board to be involved in initiatives that they may have followed. And, and this is one of my pit right here. I want to see our EMS stations, not just the newer one, but all of them, have as much life-saving technology, and if need be, some diagnostic technology that we may not even thought about having. And, and, uh, my colleagues know that I'm flirting with the emergency room mentality at those stations. And I nearly laughed. I probably hear some snipping right now. Say, Ed, you can just get off of that. It's not going to happen. But I don't look at stuff as not going. You said you look for the positives.
Yes, sir.
If we say it's not going to happen, that looks to the negative. And that's the way I count. So, as, as you start your new venture for the next 15 or 20 years, I just want you to think of those things.
Yes, sir.
And never think about what we cannot do. Think about what we can do. Because you're talking about human lives here. You're talking about, you know, you, I mean, that's just the bottom line.
Yes, sir.
That's just my take on it.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Welcome aboard, Dave.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, we hired you to do a job, and, uh, you've only been on the job less than two weeks. So, we're going to give you some time to see what does need to be done or doesn't need to be done. But, uh, we don't need to sit up here and second-guess him this early. I mean, he's only been on the job less than two weeks. Let's leave the man alone. We had the confidence in hiring him. Let's leave him alone and let him do his job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And, and we do have the confidence in Dave. We really do. He is the right man at the right time, at the right place.
All right. Thank you all for your time.
I'm a little old today, so I'll kiss you another day about it.
Yes, sir. I look forward to it.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dave.
Man, I don't know if he's got a piece of comment about.
Uh, next is, uh, public comments.
Number seven, number six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm, Mr. Akak, I apologize. The resolution.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, for letting me read this resolution. Whereas breast cancer touches every corner of the United States, and hundreds of thousands of Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and tens of thousands will die from it. And whereas about one in eight women born today in the United States will get breast cancer at some point in their lifetime, and approximately 2,000 men are diagnosed with breast cancer each year. And whereas, we show our support for every individual, every family struggling with breast cancer, and we pause to remember those we have lost. And whereas, Breast Cancer Awareness Month is October, is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of daily, early detection of breast cancer by getting a mammogram, or encourage our community organizations, churches, families, individuals to get involved. And whereas, we salute the women and men who dedicate themselves to prevention and, and detection and treatment as we observe Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim October 2019 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Wayne County. Encourage all citizens to join in activities that will increase awareness of what we can do to prevent breast cancer adopted this day, the first day of October 2019. A.J. Gurley III, Chairman. Uh, Mr. Gurley, I, uh, appreciate you letting me read this resolution. Uh, as y'all know, this is dear to me. Uh, but the figure that really is alarming is one in eight women. Uh, ladies, stay on top of this. Uh, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Akak.
It's in form of a motion.
Can we have discussion? If not, discussion, I'm very pleased to have you right here. Next, our public comments time. Anyone from the audience wish to speak? All right, now, one wish to speak is public comments time is close. And we'll go with a full committee, Mr. Akak.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We do have some appointments, a, a new appointment and a couple of reappointments. Uh, we would make a motion that we appoint Mr. Craig Folk to the Wayne County Planning Board. And this is a new appointment, and that's in form of a motion.
We've heard a motion in discussion. If that, I'm very pleased to see if I'll raise your hand.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have two reappointments of Ms. Betty Benton and Ms. Joyce Bogan to the Wayne County Nursing Home Community Advisory Council, and that's in form of a motion.
All right, heard a motion in discussion. Can we have discussion? I'm very pleased to see if I'll raise your hand.
And that's all we have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Akak. And finish business with Mr. Akak.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in front of you is a memo from Dave Cutterback, our new EMS Director. Uh, I appreciate, and again, Dave, even before he started, he was helping us with this process. As the board is aware, we started looking at sending out requests for proposals for non-emergency transport, uh, which is basically out-of-county transports, uh, from Wayne Memorial, uh, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM and all day on Sundays. And, uh, we sat in an interview two, uh, different companies, and we would like to recommend that we begin contract negotiations, uh, with North State Medical Transfer. And this has been reviewed, uh, by staff. This is, uh, UNC Wayne was part of the interview process. And if you have any questions, Dave is here. Uh, if you need any additional information that wasn't shared earlier.
Mr. Chairman, if I could inquire a little bit about your, um, statistics here that you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
It says the evening wheelchair van demand of 385 or approximately 1.07 calls a night.
Yes, sir.
And that is just for wheelchair?
That's correct.
Uh, the other 3.59 are actually other transports?
So, we have wheelchair vans that are broken down into van one, two, and three. Each of those had a specific call volume. The total of all three of those trucks was 385 activations during that timeframe. And so, the translation is approximately one, one activation a night. We do outside of that have additional call volume from additional non-emergency transport units.
Which were about four additional, um, three and a half a night?
Yes, sir, 3.59, but three and a half. Yes, sir.
So, so basically, there are a total of, hmm, about five a night?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Of wheelchair and then non-emergency transport?
Yes, sir.
And when you talk about the other transports, you're talking about actually using a stretcher as an example?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Why were there so many calls at night using a stretcher? I mean, because these are non-emergency now. We're not talking about EMS. I, I'm not quite understanding why there would be so many calls because the doctor offices are closed.
Right.
And if it's an emergency, you've got EMSs that's taking them to the hospital.
Correct.
So, what are those, what are those, why are there so many transports at night?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, um, non-emergency really covers an umbrella of, of quite a few different things. It, and it really includes people that are just leaving the hospital, that are non-ambulatory and can't be in a wheelchair. And so, that includes people that are going to other hospitals. Maybe it's a basic transport, maybe there's advanced life support. The other population of people that are being transferred are going back to nursing homes. And so, these are non-ambulatory patients who can't sit in a wheelchair and can't walk on their own. So, that number, uh, 1292 is the number. That's a mixture of everything. Uh, patients going to outside hospitals, both on the basics life support level, advanced life support level, and these are also people going back to nursing homes that are non-ambulatory. So, it's, it's a pretty wide spectrum in there.
Did you have similar records for daytime usage?
Uh, the daytime records, so a breakdown, these calls for the non-emergency transport at, in the evening, uh, that was 16% of the activations. So, the remainder was before that period of time. Yeah, nighttime calls for the non-emergency transport, not the wheelchair van, was 16% of calls. The wheelchair van, uh, evening calls was 19.2% of their total activation time.
Now, you lost me on that.
Yeah.
Have you got numbers?
Uh, I, I could come up with the numbers for you. Yes, sir.
If you could, pass it. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, the focus for this report was really to look, uh, for the numbers for this transport. Those are easy numbers for me to get for you. Yes, sir.
Hmm. Is, is the problem really a scheduling problem in regards to with the hospital where they are transporting, are scheduling those transports in non-peak times, as an example, at night? I, is that, is that an issue?
Yeah, so I, I don't believe it's a scheduling problem. In emergency medicine, we're active 24 hours a day. So, I don't know exactly when these people came into the hospital, but there was a point of time where they were evaluated, they received treatment, and then they needed to be returned to either the facility they came from or to a different level of care. So, I can't really say this is a scheduling problem. Their treatment in the hospital has been completed, and now they need to go to another destination, whether it be back home, uh, or to another facility. So, as, as a 24-hour thing, I wish that I could predict exactly when our peak times would come on this. Uh, I, I'm a trend person. I look for that stuff. Trends in emergency medicine is a very difficult thing to figure out. Yeah.
We've got a number of other questions, but I'll-
Yeah, please ask them.
Okay.
Yeah, please do.
And what we're asking from the board is, is again, we've gone through the RFP process. We've had interviews with two, uh, companies. We're not asking you to approve a contract. We're asking you to allow us to begin negotiations, working with UNC Wayne and also staff, uh, to begin con, uh, a contract with North State, uh, Medical, and we will bring that final contract back to the board for approval.
So, let me ask the question a minute. If I understood some of your numbers listed?
Yes, sir.
Are we talking about approximately five, somewhere between 3.5 and five trips a night?
Yes, sir.
And so, the company that we're talking about is going to have, to have a paid person in place or a potential number of people in place to do these five trips a night?
That's correct.
And one thing we, we asked in the request for a proposal is that they would have to have a physical location here in Wayne County.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, sir.
And, and so, in the final analysis, the dollar to maintain a site, at least one person, but potentially two, or how many people are we talking about needing to be available to be on that vehicle to do the work? And, and I guess I'm wondering how it's going to be profitable. Not that I guess that should be our concern, because that's got to be the vendor's concern. And if they bid on it, I guess it comes down to profitability for them.
Yes, sir.
But you see where I'm going? Like, oh, it's-
And, and that's why we, we started off, we, we started off with just one that we were looking at franchising with. Uh, many communities look at multiple franchises. So, we were starting off with one, uh, to make sure that there's profitability there for that, uh, medical provider.
Okay, so let me jump to this part. The payer is going to be the insurance card, a policy, or whatever. The, the, the cost is going to be borne by the person who's being transported, not the county's taxpayer, or am I wrong? What's-
You are correct. It will be covered by the person who is being transferred.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, what our job is, is to make that available, Mr. Man. Is that what we're talking about?
Right. We, what we have right now is, is we have basically say that all that services has to be provided by Wayne County. What we are doing now is saying we're franchising, or we would be franchising with a medical provider to do that from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So, that way, we do not tax our EMS, uh, units that they are providing the non-emergency where they can focus on the emergency.
So, at the end of the day, we have shifted some of the cost of this from our taxpayer's part of money because we were maintaining an entity to do this ourselves.
Right.
And now, it's going to be by that vendor. But what has always been a little bit of my question, were we assume, were we originally assuming some costs that we shouldn't have assumed based upon the fact that, as we talk about it right now, the pay, the, the transported person is going to be the payer?
That's correct.
In the past, however you cut this, it was out of the taxpayer of Wayne County that was paying the transport.
We, we have been subsidizing the non-emergency.
All right.
And, um, what we are trying to do now is to reexamine that and look at ways that the non-emergency side can be cost, uh, at least break even.
Okay.
And if it's not, then we will look at that- And if it's not, then we will look at that and, and evaluate that as we move forward.
So at the end of the day, we should be able to give some congratulations to our, to our, our, our manager as he moves us from, as he moves to the whole process being more cost-effective as far as our responsibility is concerned.
Right. We, we, we're, our responsibility structurally is emergency medical services.
Okay.
It, it's not, not emergency.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're not look, not seeing the forest because we're looking at the trees. This is not gonna be limited just to five point, whatever, calls a night. Whoever gets this contract, uh, they're, they're gonna have out-of-county transportation. It's, it's, it's more than just looking at those five, five calls. I mean, and if, if they come in, uh, sign a contract with the county, they know what they're getting into. And, but this is, this is gonna be more than just really five calls a night possibly. I mean, you know, they're gonna handle it out-of-county calls.
Sure.
And, and, you know, they may be doctors' offices or other facilities that may need their services. This, this is, we can't base it just on five calls a night. Uh, am I not correct?
Well, Mr. Acock, if I could cut in for a moment. I, I don't think that I was reacting to what you're talking about, of course, out-of-county. I was reacting to the 3.5 to five points that the gentleman and Mr. Daughtry brought up. So I appreciate your interjection about what I asked about, but I was specifically talking about the five that I heard.
Yeah.
All right.
So i- in, in this call volume, uh, we do take into consideration the average, as Mr. Daughtry asked about. We take into consideration a, uh, average activations, but we also have to take into consideration what I refer to as a surge plan. On that night, what if we have eight transfers that need to go out of the hospital? And, and if we set our mind on this number, and we do have eight transfers, then there may be issues. And so one of the questions that we ask these companies is, what is your surge plan? If all of your ambulances are unavailable or tied up on transfers, what is your backup? And then what is your backup to your backup? And they're all able to provide us with their backup to their backup to include what they believe their response time will be to that sixth, seventh, eighth, and maybe even ninth patient, because we needed to look at it that way.
Right.
Yeah, so we're prepared for that as well.
Mr. Chairman. And Dr. Grant Hospital, they blessed us, have they not?
Uh, yes, sir. They were actually part of the interview process with us. They had a representative, yes, sir.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
And we just need a motion to allow us to move forward with contract negotiations with North State to provide non-emergency medical transfer.
So move.
Motion made in discussion. If not, in favor, please, please, raise your right hand. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Now, I consider, Jen, we had a briefing, we reviewed it. Do I have a motion to approve, considering, Jen? So move. Motion made in discussion. In favor, please, please, raise your right hand. Mr. Handicapped.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as we sort of been talking about EMS stations, uh, we did have our last, uh, EMS stations, uh, are open on Miller's Chapel Road, the Willston EMS, uh, Station 11. Appreciate Commissioner Daughtry, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Acock, uh, being there as well, and, and I thought Public Affairs did a great job in handling the grand opening. Um, it, it really turned out well. Wanted to also give a, a public thank-out and, uh, to our local delegation with respect to what they've done for Eureka, uh, and also for Fremont, uh, the two bills that had been set aside in the budget. Number one, to help operations for Eureka so they can fund the bills to help pay Fremont for their sewer. But number two, having the funding in there for the infrastructure to look at replacing and rehab the sewer system in Eureka. So this is really great news, uh, for Wayne County. It really solves a huge problem that, that could have fell back into the Board of Commissioners' lap one way or the other. So, uh, just wanted to publicly thank our delegation for that. Also, uh, we had a meeting, uh, with Senator Perry. I wanted to thank, uh, Senator, or excuse me, Commissioner Mayo and Commissioner Acock for attending that meeting as well. Just also with respect to emergency management, I hope everybody has seen a copy of the After Action Report from Hurricane Dorian. Excellent job by our Emergency Management Director, Aaron Stryker. Aaron is gonna come to our next meeting and go over that report. So what we did before is kind of gave you the highlights of Dorian with some basic numbers, but now we're gonna start kind of delving into the weeds a little bit so you can see what we're planning to do, and so we'll be better prepared again, uh, for the next event. So I'm very pleased at what was received as far as input, and really a lot of thanks to, uh, Brian Taylor and also Aaron for the work that they've done on this plan. And, um, also just wanted to remind you that we have the Ag Extension Lunch sponsored by The Chamber scheduled October 9th, uh, which will be noon at the Maxwell Center. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Handicapped. For our Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Daughtry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Serving in government is really not easy. There are a lot of ups and there are a lot of downs. There's a lot of rewarding things that happen and sometimes takes the wind out of your sails. But the framers of our Constitution wanted it that way. They wanted it tough. To get results, you must find a majority to agree with your proposals after fully vetting them. Sometimes this brings about divisions, and as Commissioner Bell calls it, intense fellowship. But that's what it takes to bring about consensus and get things done. I heard Colonel Yates, uh, call this disruptive interference. He said this last week as he praised this method in order to discover improvements in accomplishing his mission. Sometimes we need to look back, though, and review our progress. Here are some of the things that this Board of Commissioners have resulted, uh, got results on. One, they reduced taxes, and that has saved our county taxpayers over $18 million. This board reorganized the county budget to address the overlooked investment needed in facilities and infrastructure. Improving the delivery of services by training and investing in county departments to recruit, recruit and retain what now is one of the best groups of county employees in the entire state. The start of construction of a new 911 complex. Upgrades in our law enforcement from car and body cameras, new hardware and software and equipment. Building a new $10 million jail, which by the way, saved our county over $1 million annually. But it also produces $1 million annually. Now, that's a $2 million swing, folks. That's a payback in approximately five years. This board recognized the importance of agriculture to our county. We built a new $8 million office complex for farm services to be delivered. And by developing a unique funding partnership with the state, with the city of Goldsboro, and private contributors, we cut the ribbon on the $13 million Maxwell Center that's now producing over $5 million to our county annually. We partnered with the city and the base to bring about the Brian Multi-Sports Complex here in Wayne County. Working with our city, county, state, and federal officials, and this is a big one, folks, we had federal legislation signed designating US Highway 70 and 117 as future interstate highways. Constructing new stations to house our ambulances and EMS staff to establish an eight-minute response time when emergency help is needed. Through grants from the North Carolina Department of Transportation and Golden Leaf, com, we will be completing next year a $5 million investment in our jet port. A new industrial park, as well as the start of construction of a new five, 50,000 square foot shell building at Park East to attract jobs and industry. We are designing the future renovation to an existing building for a new social services office, which will save our county millions of dollars. Upgrades to our infrastructure from county sewer to solid waste. We increased funding for local education. We completed the building of three new schools and many new classrooms, bringing our investment in new school facilities to over $80 million. Increased local dollars for K-12 education by approximately one, $1 million annually. That means $1 million more from the local funding for our schools. We increased local teacher supplements. Funding for Wayne Community College by over $1 million. And $3.5 million of local county dollars for the new automotive and collision repair building in Wayne Community College, and so much more. The mission is not complete. There's much more to accomplish. So today, I want to let everyone know that I look forward to helping this Board of Commissioners accomplish more as I will be filing for reelection in December. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Gomorri. Commissioner Mayor.
Yeah, okay. Boy, you said I'm after that, Commissioner. We have accomplished a lot.
Yeah.
As a board. I was able to attend several things over the past two weeks. As the county manager, I think alluded to, or someone else, that we attended the Commissioners' advocacy lunch at the Singer Center. Singer Center is a, is a really icon in Wayne County. If you haven't been to it, you need to go. I mean, they got everything. I'm, I'm one of these people that I will go whenever I slow down. It doesn't look like I'm gonna be doing that anytime soon. Also attended a library board meeting, as you've seen. We're getting some grants, uh, for the library. Library is really an important ingredient in what you were just talking about, Commissioner Daughtry. We had a social services board meeting. What can I say? It's always good to see progress being made, uh, in Department of Social Services. We have come a long way. You two fellows sitting there, and Mr. Gomorri is sitting right here, knows what the DSS Board has been through the last two, three years. I am so pleased to be a part of that board. Also met as, as the county manager with Senator Jim Perry of Fremont, uh, all of our delegation. I, I, I do a kudos to all, everybody's involved. But Eureka and Fremont, especially Eureka, need all the help they can get, and this came along at a perfect time. It will have a future effect for the next 50 years of the economic development in Northern Party County. This one thing. I also attended State of the Military, uh, at the Goldsboro Event Center. Now that Commissioner Daughtry has stowed all of my thunder, I, uh, I'd like to say that at, at the end of this term, which will be 2020, I will have served as District One Commissioner for nine years. If you remember, I was appointed one year, and I've been elected two terms, which is eight years. If you recall in 2012, when I ran, my slogan was, and if I have to, and I'm still gonna use those same signs, I have on my sign, citizen servant. There's a difference between, and I always say there's a difference. I've never called myself a politician. I have called myself a citizen servant, even though I know you have to be a politician because I've been in business 41 years. You got to be a politician to a certain amount to work with people. But the key is, is that over, that over the years, I have kept the promise to the citizens of District One and all of Wayne County that I would represent them. They elected me to do that. In some cases, I have gone against even my own party because what I felt in my heart was right for the citizens of District One and the county as a whole. Yes, as Commissioner Daughtry has alluded to, this board has made tremendous strides in moving Wayne County forward. But as he said, there's still much more to be done. It would be an honor for me to serve on this board and to serve the citizens of District One. Therefore, I am planning to file in December to run for a third term as Commissioner of District One. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bell.
I guess that when I look back in time, evidently I did a pretty good job in training all these commissioners. Well, I haven't made up my mind yet about running again, but it looked like regardless of what I do, we're gonna leave the, uh, the county board in good hands. But, uh, I, I always tell, I'll make a little comment real briefly. I always try to tell the commissioners that you run as a Republican or a Democrat, but once you get elected, you are county commissioner. It's not Democrat or Republican anymore. You do what is in the best interest of Wayne County. So, and I'm glad to hear that this morning. It seemed like we have caught on and we're gonna do that. I did attend two meetings, the, uh, Gateway Board and the Wages Board. Nothing major to report, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's great, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of the events that I attended was, has already been mentioned, so I won't, won't go over them. My biggest issue is I've been attending a lot of funerals here lately, and I'm tired of going to funerals. But, uh, and thank you again for giving me the honor to read the resolution about breast cancer. It's, uh, I just worry about the percentages of 1% male and 99% females, the chances of them, uh, having breast cancer so much greater. So I just, uh, I feel for the, for the ladies. And other than that, I don't have any comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. State.
Just a few. It was mentioned about the Singer Center, and I thought it was funny when we got there. Paul said, you know, go sit among, when she was introducing us, she says, when y'all get through, you go sit among the seniors. And she had me about, I said, we are the seniors. But I had a great time while I was there. And, um, she, Paul does a great job over there. Attended WCA meeting, and sorry I missed the, the first one, but I couldn't be there. And Mark's doing a lot of good work over there. And I'm glad to see there's some announcements. And we won't tell you what the next is yet, but we will. I went to the State of the Military too. It's always great to see Colonel Yates speak. He's, uh, he's gonna, when he does retire, he's gonna stay here in North Carolina, so he really has his heart with this in North Carolina. Was at the Maxwell Center the other day, are we gonna reopen our Brooks campaign, kind of push that again? I'd like to see that because I'm, and I'm gonna get mine, I promise you. Because Joe Daughtry's got one, I've gotta have one. So all of us need to have one out there. And I want to thank Mr. Stryker for getting that report out as quick as he did. That is the kind of work that I expect to come from that office, and I really do appreciate him doing that. So other than that, other things have already been mentioned, so that's all I've got.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I signaled for you to skip me a few minutes ago. I had an inclination that, uh, my two colleagues on my left and right were, might have been ready to make an announcement, but didn't want to steal any of that thunder. I would like to, uh, uh, just briefly to say something about, uh, what had, it came up at an opportune time. time when we were discussing this, the money that's coming to the state, to the county to correct some things. But I would just want the, the public to remember that there's a lot left to be done in Wayne County. And some infrastructure things is gonna take a concerted effort by some real committed folk to be able to do these things. It's gonna take some commitment. It's gonna take some commitment, and we'll all make announcements down the road, I'm sure, about what our intentions are. But just remember, there's, there's school building issues that hasn't been solved, there are drainage issues that haven't been solved, and so there's a lot down the road to be done. And I believe there's a lot of good people, they're sitting right on this board, capable of doing that, but that's down the road. But I, I'm just glad to hear folks speak out about things that have been done, and knowing there are some great things down the road that need to be done.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna save my voice. We ready to go over to the probation parole office now, or?
We, the grand opening, or the ribbon cutting is at 11:00, so if you would like to adjourn until 11:00, we, we, we didn't think we'd get out early, so that's the reason why we put it at 11:00. And I think there's more people coming at 11:00, so I would hate to do it too early.
I would recommend a recess, and then we'll adjourn.
Chairman Page.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bell.
I'd just like to take this one to thank the probation and parole people for allowing us to remodel those buildings. This is the first time in the history of the state of North Carolina that a county Board of Commissioners redevelop or develop a facility for probation and parole. This is a first, and I guarantee you that the people in Raleigh appreciate this, because they told me so on medication. So thank you all again for pushing me into doing that work. I'm understood, Mr. Dodger. And there is no other unit, or no other facilities in the whole state, from what I understand, that's gonna look like the Wayne County probation and parole. So thank you again.
One thing I had on, said, I took the time the other day to stop by over there and see what the transformation was. Our facilities department did a heck of a job of it. It really looks good.
There's a lot to be proud of with the work that Kendall's done and facilities has done, and cost savings that we have on that building as well.
How much were cost savings again?
We have less, we have less than $125,000 in the building.
Well, let's put that in perspective. How many square feet is in that building? I estimate 10,000, I estimate 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, I've, we'll find out.
Well, let's assume it's 10,000 square feet. At the cost of construction, at $200 a square foot, you're looking at a $2 million facility there.
Yeah. At least.
And we're looking at the fact that in-house, which was, by the way, one of the first times this has ever been done, and that is in-house with our staff, we did this renovation, and $125,000, that's just
Well, but also you gotta remember, this, we're not finished yet. You know, we're still renovating the old elections building as well, so the cost savings there also. So you just could not be more proud of the work that our facilities department is in hand, under the direction of Kendall's son.
Mr. Chairman, can we, can we utilize that expertise maybe over in the Busman Building?
A little bit, maybe?
A little bit larger. We did, the front offices, the front offices were done. The renovation of the front offices was done.
See, here's the frustration.
We gotta kill time.
When you're trying to get things done as inexpensively as possible, there's a law preventing you from doing it.
That's right.
The law limits us to renovations in-house to how much?
500,000.
How much?
130,000.
Well, you can't very well renovate the Busman Building for that.
Unless we get the law changed, which it should be.
Well, I agree. Why, why would you have such a law?
They got good lobbyists.
Oh, yeah, of course. Give them 8% to 10%. And another 8% to 10% here.
Those people in Raleigh are proud of that probation parole.
I'm glad we get this one.